We missed the memo.
We, oh, it's great. Heidi's got great. Well, we thought it was Black Dress Day and I didn't bring one inside. I brought the black pants. Well, it worked with the plan. Either way, it worked.
I'm going to get that construction update during that. Is that okay to the whole community?
Yep, absolutely.
So I'm just going to read it off my phone when I get there. I just want to, I kind of have it in my head.
Okay, six o'clock. Please write for the pledge. All right. Good evening. I'm also going to read our mission statement. In partnerships with the communities, the mission in the Dilworth, Plin and Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. A roll call. All board members, except Board Member Laura Item, she is on vacation or on her way back from vacation. Others present, we have our superintendent in Hunstead. We also have our community ed director Tracy Tolleson, along with Assistant Principal Brittany John, joining us. And any changes to the agenda?
Nope, there is none.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, five. Public comments, rebel recognition. I'm, well, ask here. Do you ladies want to speak? No, no speakers. Okay. Rebel recognition. Anybody have anything? Or kind of everything is wound down, so.
Just to remind the community that the DGF Rebel Fishing Club is having their annual silent auction in Unraveling. That will be at the Speedway off of Highway 10, and that is Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 7:30.
5:00 to 7:30. Awesome.
And the full activities are in their meeting tonight.
All activities are having their meeting tonight, so 7 through 12. So kickoff starts next week. I know there's some captain's practices going on right now, but next week is the week. It's going to be busy around here. We're getting a parking lot today. Did everybody see that? Not great timing, but guess what, public, it's getting done. So we're happy. All right, let's move on to 6.1, board committee reports, please.
Yeah, we have, we mentioned the personnel meeting to talk about the admin contract status. We've got it written signed. Basically changed. They had a manager box of insurance. We reduced the number of days, 260 down to 250 days for principals. And principals also have the bonus. They can get up to $3,000 on bonus. They meet their goals. They're set by ten, and then the cost of fees.
Yeah, and that does go for the Tracy and John as well. Yeah, they have the goals, just like the principals, but their schedule or their contracts are still 260-day contracts.
It is. And then we also talked about, okay, I'm meeting with the NSCA. We were meeting with them in the frontline. So it's all that bad from that.
Any other committee reports?
We did go to restorative justice.
Oh, did you go to ours?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm kind of telling you that the idea is to try to help keep kids out of the system since the jail, basically. And yeah, I thought it was good. I don't know, you know, probably applicable in every situation, but certainly a tool we could use. That is to try to get the perpetrator, I guess, of whether it's, you know, a law, along with the victim, trying to get some sort of resolution there. And it would certainly bash. They're trying to, the county's trying to do that. They've got some money allocated for coordinator with the county. Like I said, it's a tool that the principals want to pay for.
Yeah, we attended the one in Moorhead. The admin team went, met the person that the county has hired to be that liaison or that lead. It is really an effective tool for a certain population, right? Again, it's to keep these kids out of the system. So the day-to-day issues that you have in school, they don't necessarily go to rest or this process, restorative justice. But there are kids that are repeat offenders that this does fit for. And I guess that's what the county and that's what the district attorney was there, county attorney was there, law enforcement's there. They're all talking about, those are the kids that we're talking about. To try to do some restorative justice. And it does work. It's been proven to work. So, yeah, we're open to it. Our SRO, Valerie is also going to be a big part of that. And so hopefully.
We do restorative justice practices already. So when we write a ticket to someone, most of those people in all tickets, it defer to restorative justice. And if they're willing to go through that process, then that ticket goes away. But it's largely ineffective if it takes a month until you get done with the lay. So they're hoping that if they can settle time in each school district, that that victim and the suspect and all applicable parties can meet quicker and they can resolve and actually find that restorative space instead of just losing the effectiveness of it later. So that's our hope is to have it done in the school. We do that all the time already. Michelle Zanowski works very regularly in our commutery's office through all of our new home tickets, whether it comes from the street or from the school resource officer. But this will be more effective because it'll happen in a timely fashion so they're not having that delay. Because it's like a puppy, you know, eating its shoe and then it'll leave later being like, bad boy, we can't do that. That's not effective. It's not effective when we're talking about humans either because that behavior loses its connection to the punishment. But it's our, that's all.
Yeah, really, it's us partnering with the county to be more timely and supportive. So, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you guys were able to go. All right, any other committees?
I was having a clarification I had asked three speakers. I was confused about making all the data about students, workers at our daycare. And there was some confusion about, about the position in the nighttime outpost. And we're looking at college students, so it's not just our basic students. And so I must start that and assume that other people may have to be.
All right. You're next, sir. 6.2.
Okay, well, I got a few things. I guess, number one, we have a sixth grade position. We're going to accept a resignation tonight. And there's a position open in sixth grade. His position was fifth grade. We took somebody that was in fifth grade last year at Kent and already slid her down into this position, which opened his sixth grade position. It's been posted as a elementary position and as a language arts for middle school, hoping that we can probably reach more people. Right now, that's not going so well. We do have a backup plan, so I just wanted to let you know. We do have staff on site that have that language arts degree for middle school, or it's a 512, so that person can shift into that position. And then that person is currently teaching an elective for eighth grade. So right now, our eighth graders have three choices for electives. Our seventh graders have two. If we get in a pickle here, we can take this person and have them teach language arts in sixth grade. And then eighth graders would have two electives, just like the seventh graders. So Mr. Hendrickson can't still felt that's a good option. If we have to do that, we still can take care of it. And he's licensed in that area. So we're not there yet, but the clock is ticking. So I just want to make sure you know that we do have a backup plan if nothing can come from that. Okay? So that's the first thing. The second thing, I just, I want to address kind of both communities or all three communities and what our buildings and our construction are going to look like in a month. I want to give some reassurance and those things. So I'm going to just, I think I don't have to look at it, but I'm going to probably, I have my notes here just in case. So we're going to start at the Glendon site. So the Glendon site is going to be open. Every room is going to be available for our students and staff for the first day of school. There is going to be obviously some last-minute finishes in August. So that's going to be, when you come and look at it, you go, really, that's going to happen? But you also have to remember we have a month. And floors and a ceiling, I've seen them going each in a day. So the floor in a day, the ceiling in a day. So when you start looking around, you go, oh, they don't have the floor and ceilings in. Yep, that's two days. It can go that fast. So same with hallways. If anybody was here and saw them put the flooring in the hallway, in two days, they went down, I mean, I don't know how many square feet. So those things can happen quickly. There is an exception. The shop, of course, will not be open. We are set to have the shop start here now any day. It is going to be set late January, early February, as far as the completion date. But we do have two classrooms for our shop teachers. So our industrial tech has two classrooms, so they do have a place to meet with kids. We're working through first semester, what it's going to look like. Can we use the garage out here that we have the weight room in here tonight? Can that be our shop for cutting wood and doing some of those projects in the fall? They're working through the particulars on that, what exactly it's going to look like. But we'll have it then for second semester. So I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. The gym, the gym will be open. This area that we're in now is going to be open when school starts. The gym will be open for volleyball in school. The exception there is the lockers in the locker room. The lockers have been out in the Pacific Ocean for months. There is a labor dispute on the Pacific coast. And so the ship has been sitting out there with our lockers floating around out there, waiting to come to port for over a month. That's almost two months now. We can't control it. Our people can't control it. The companies in Tennessee has talked to us every week where they're at, where they're at, where they're at. So our locker rooms, they're going to have benches for people to sit in. There's going to be hooks up so they can hang something, but there's going to be no lockers to sit here. So when our visitors come, it's not perfect. It'll be kind of a throwback to maybe when I played, we always had a valuable bag. And we put our valuables in a bag and our manager always brought it to the bench and sat with us. I don't know. It's very unfortunate, but it is what it is, and we can only control so much. So that's the Glendon site. One last thing I want to talk about the Glendon site is this week, they're going to be painting the bus loading and unloading zone. We have finalized that plan with MetroCog, with local police and the school district. So that information will be shared out soon. It's got maps and what have you. So that'll be coming soon. And again, the signage and the painting is all going to happen. Well, the painting this week, the signage will happen before school starts. So that'll be good. That's the Glendon site. The door sites, there's, we have the new office area, the new corridor, the new gym, and the media center. All of those areas will not open until beginning of October. But all classrooms for our students and teachers will be open, with the exception of the one gym. So the FIAD people will have one gym, and hopefully this fall it's nice and we can be outside as well. But we will have one gym available there. They tore that floor out over the weekend, and they are going to be putting it in starting Wednesday. So that one gym, the existing, the old middle school gym, will be done for the first day of school. So the drop-off and pickup in Dilworth is going to start the year just like it ended last year. So parent drop-off is by the playground or door one, because that's where the elementary office is going to be the exact same as last year, until we can make that move. And then the buses are still going to drop off, I believe it's First Street and Door Six. So they're still going to utilize that, just like they always have in the past. So that's going to stay the same as last year. So nothing too crazy there. And that is the door site. Questions from the board, quick? If I forgot anything?
Do you want to renumber the doors before school? In the door site, does 106 would not only be 106 seconds?
Um, right now, we don't have plans to renumber the doors at this time unless I'm missing something, right? We're going to leave them as is for now, correct? Okay, so if you guys can't hear, Tracy's here tonight too, so thank you, Tracy, for that. Val, our SRO, is going to evaluate that. She's helping with that process. So right now, I'll just say it's the same as last year. If that does change, that's a good question, Nicole. We'll make sure that we communicate that. Yeah, good question.
Any updates on both kitchens for the community?
Yep, kitchens will be up and running. I asked them today. If you looked at the Glendon site, you would have thought there was no way. Today, they already put in a bunch of stuff. So there's ovens and the stage. I met with Brian from the state last week. The hood does have an exhaust fan, so he's allowing us to do full cooking here in Glendon. The Dilworth site, we're waiting for the rental on the second site. All the contractors are ready. And I met with the masonry group today. They said they'll cut it up, they'll set it. And Dennis is very confident that that'll also be done. Some of the stuff that didn't get ordered on time for the Dilworth site, as far as the serving stuff for the cooks, we have it over here, the portable stuff we bought last year for here for that hallway, we're going to bring that over. And so Eric is confident that we'll have enough serving trays, serving, I'm forgetting, the cook serving, the serving. The cart, the serving part, the hot part, sorry. Easy for me to say. Anyway, so that's, we're going to be okay there too. So, yeah, kitchen should have two lines, and that's important. So anything else? Parking lot in Dilworth. Parking lot in Dilworth is getting leveled and getting set up. The final date on that, it's going to be right at that kickoff time too, beginning of September-ish. But that can go quick as well. It's just not there yet. So the parking for staff is probably primarily going to be street to start, unless that can get finished. So I'm not going to hold my breath on that, but it'll probably be in September sometime. Other things, questions from the board? I just wanted to make sure the public kind of hears, okay, where are they at? There's no, you know, when you walk through here, if you drive by, you go, there's no way. It's going to happen. I've talked multiple times with all of them. We've talked to, I'm at the contractor meetings every week. I'm feeling more confident, other than these little things, like the lockers are floating in the ocean and this stuff. Other than that, I think we're okay. So anyway. Anything else, not construction-related questions in the, I don't have other things at this time, but.
You just go where the admin school board retreats?
Oh, yep. So that's next. We're doing that Thursday. So I think you guys had an agenda shared, Brooke shared an agenda. So we'll have our admin team meeting in this room in the morning. You guys will come and join us for lunch. Then we'll go through our lists there. So we're going to talk about our free and reduced lunch forms and for compensatory funding. We're talking about our old rebel mascot stuff, so this is going to be a big part. We have a lot of old things that have the old rebel mascot that we'd like to auction, so we're going to make a decision on what that looks like. Strategic planning and moving forward with our DGF blueprint and what's going to happen next. And then our admin team, they're going to share each one of their areas, their hopes and dreams and plans for this year. So they're going to share that with you guys as well. So that's kind of what we have. And then we're going to head out to my house and just have a little time together, and then we'll go for supper at the restaurant. So, yeah, that's what we have.
All right.
Any questions on that?
All right, let's move on to 7.1, for the July 25 regular meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Brittany. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. 8.1, do you have the claims and accounts with David?
I do. The accounts are $341,118.50.
All right. Also included in our consent agenda is the treasurer monthly budget report. Resignation of Angela Cordell, special education teacher, effective the end of the 2022 school year. Approved the resignation of Kimberly McDonald, paraprofessional, effective the end of the 2022 school year. Approved the resignation of Carrie Shipman, adapted physical ed teacher, effective the end of the 2022 school year. Approved the resignation of Eric Olson, food service director, effective August 14. Approved the resignation of Ian Langford, paraprofessional, effective the end of the 2022 school year. Approved the resignation of Kai Anderson, middle school teacher, effective the end of the 2022 school year. And approved the resignation of Brianna Erickson, paraprofessional, effective the end of the 2022 school year. Do we have a motion? Oh, I got Amy first. Nicole, you want a second? All right. Any discussion or questions? Ronnie, did you see anything in the bills?
No, there were three different areas. I just had questions or recommendations on that big math bill. What's that one for?
Big math bill, that's for curriculum adjustment. Yep, we, what we did, we did for middle school and high school. So all new curriculum for virtually 712. Yeah, yeah.
And then it looked like a couple of different bills, not the one in the 2014 suburban, oxygen sensors. So like usually they put a couple in and doesn't work, and they got to put two different ones in. There, there's two different O2 sensors on it, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you have anything on that, Brooke? I don't. I guess I'd have to check on that. I don't.
The last one I had was on, what was it, JK Sports?
Yeah.
Big deal for, was it tubs of fun or fun, what the heck was it called?
I can't remember. Oh, the score table.
For 15 grand or something like that.
Yeah, they're, they're in the gym. There's two of them, two scorestables for this gym. And they have been delivered.
Just the name and everything, just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. JK Sports, we, we got the scorestables. We got the new volleyball setup for this gym from them. We also got two portable basketball hoops that you can set up in the gym. They're, they're not like MDSUs, you know, but they're, they're good. So they can stand alone, so they're freestanding, because we needed more basketball hoops in here. So all those items came from them, JK. Yeah.
We're rather approving Eric's resignation. I thought you said he might stay on partly.
Yeah, yeah. So in the comments, that's what I thought I would address. So when people hear all these resignations, you know, just like this, we go, oh, yikes. You also notice that later in the board meeting, we're going to accept some new positions, some new people, new contracts. Eric and I have visited once. I meet with him again now next week. He's going to stay on with us to make sure that we can bridge this gap. But I also wanted to make sure that we follow through with this because officially, he is starting another job. He's just going to help us out and bridge that gap. Now, I only got to meet with him one time. I'll meet with him again this week. Because if, if we're not getting any applications and whatnot, we're going to maybe have to discuss more with Eric. But he's turned in his letter. I think we need to accept it. He's going on to another job. The job does allow him a lot of flexibility during the week. And so again, if we get in this pickle and it doesn't get better, he has already reassured me that he's going to stick with us and help us with this transition. So.
We just pay him part-time or something?
Yeah, I just told him. So one of the things I told him that we need to talk about this week is, is it 20 hours, is it 10 hours? And then what is our rate of pay? We're going to have to come up with something on that. And so I can be honest with you, at the next board meeting, we may be having more in-depth conversation about that. Right now, I don't think we have any applicants, and this is going to be a tough one. I did appreciate how he approached this and said, I'm not going to leave you hanging. I'm going to help you with the process. And like I've stated, his new job does allow him some freedom. So, yeah, don't be surprised if he has his name on here in the near future to come up with a new strategy to help, I guess. So, yeah, good questions, Ronnie.
The question I had was on the financial piece, was the Fargo glass complete? If you were one over in six, was that construction-related damages? It said broken glass. I was just wondering if that is a case of contract or what?
Well, let me look at it. So it's Fargo glass. I've looked, I went through these earlier today, but did it say broken glass? Did it say 06? What fund it came from? No, it says, no, no, won't shut this handle. No, these are just all different things with the school, not construction-related. These are all non-construction-related. So other doors are glass that's broke. Some we needed to adjust the door, I see. There's just. Just maintenance. Yeah, yeah. No, that's okay. It's a good question.
All right. So we have a motion by Amy and a second by Nicole. Any further discussion?
I should say this, too. You saw that the budget now is in region one, so this is the first budget number last month. Okay. I just wanted to make sure you saw that. And I think we're at 3.7% for, if I remember. So, yeah. Just wanted to make sure you saw that as well.
All right, perfect. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.1, this is the second, or I'm sorry, this is the first reading of the student handbook of the 2022-23 elementary, middle school, and high school student handbooks. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing no questions. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.2, this is the first reading of the 22-23 employee handbook. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion?
I do want to add this. We did have our first health and safety committee meeting. We are discussing whether or not their handbook or their information should be attached to the back of the employee handbook. We're having that discussion right now. So something to think about as we, this is the first reading. So we have another health and safety committee meeting coming up. I can't remember if it's later this week or next week. It's coming up soon, and we're going to talk about that too. My previous school, we did have it all together, just because then as an employee, you go there, then you also know you can dig deeper and get into that. We're going to have that discussion. So more to come on that. I just wanted to make sure people know.
All right. So we have a motion by Amy, a second by David. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.3, this is the second reading of the 22-23 coaches activity handbook. Do we have a motion? Motion by Cole, is there a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? Katie did meet with her, all the head coaches last week, and they were going to go over this. So, so this is a new handbook to the coaching department, so hopefully it'll be used as a good tool for Katie in her new role. So. All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.4, administrative contracts. Approve them as presented. All board members were sent to the administrative contracts to review. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? All right, and this, just to remind me, the public, this is a one-year contract. One-year contract. All right, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Not like I didn't read them all. It's too many.
They run together, yeah.
Too many things. Okay. 9.5, non-certified contract for Jody Odegaard, paraprofessional, starting at 1685 an hour, effective the start of the 2022-23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.6, confidential contract. This is for Angela Cleegard, district health aide, effective the start of the 22-23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.7, this is a non-certified contract for Carrie Johnson, paraprofessional, 1667 an hour, effective the start of the 22-23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.8, this is a certified contract for Gage Reader, high school social studies, BA step four, effective the start of the 22-23 school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.9, certified contract for Taylor Scheid, elementary teacher, BA step one, effective the start of the 22-23 school year. Is there a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.
Shitting on parrots, no? How many short do you have?
I think we're still four short. I don't know how we finished last year. So, yeah. We're down to, got that, and we're still waiting with the adaptive FIAD two right now. So it's those two positions is for certified goats. We have, well, the word flexibility has to be used loosely too. So we can put our FIAD people out of, they could be out of permissions, out of field. out of field permissions for you. Our problem is the position is full-time. So it, we, we're gonna have to do a little finagling there. I'm not sure yet. So hopefully we can get somebody to apply and we can get an applicant. But that one we knew was gonna be more difficult potentially. Um, and so that's one. The others now we're slowly, we're getting them filled, uh, and that's been good. And we have ways of covering it. Paraprofessionals, we're still short. So kind of that shout out of employment. Uh, we need to help with transportation. We now still need help in the kitchen. We still need a head cook, a line cook and a couple of dishwashers. We need some custodian help, custodial help. So if you know anybody, uh, I did.
Please visit our website.
Yep, and just so you know, we're not alone. I've been talking to superintendents. I talked to one this afternoon and said, hey, can we hook up and have a job fair with you? I'm missing about this many cooks. I'm missing this many paraprofessionals. I need a nurse aide. I need that. And I said, yeah, well, we're kind of all in the same boat here. We're all trying to find these types of people. And so we're getting there. Um, it's just, it's not perfect yet. So, anyway.
Yeah. All right, nine point ten fundraiser. Um, this is in your packet. It's approved. The football fundraiser is presented. Um, this is just for the football team to sell gold cards. This is, um, September, August through September, they'll be selling these. This act, this activity, um, goes to pay for team meals and a shirt and short. I believe it's supposed to be shirt and shorts, not sure, but shirts for each player. Um, so, and this goes into their activity fund and this fund is actually made, housed in-house.
Yes.
This is not like, uh, I know they have the football club. Um, this is not that.
Correct.
So just for people watching, there's a difference.
I think the other thing that's really important is, is the board's gonna approve all fundraisers like this. And then we're gonna do it in September because it's the first year we're doing it. So the board is aware of what's happening in our community. So we understand it. So our community isn't getting beat up and we don't know what's going on. That's why we want to approve them. This one was brought to my attention last week and I said, well, they're gonna get started. I said, well, they can't start without board approval. And so this one is kind of out there by itself because I know it's something they've done in the past. I wanted to make sure they continue to do it as long as the board understands, you know, what it's about and what it's for. So that's why this one's kind of a standalone this year. Next year, it'll be a part of everything when we, uh, approve them in August. So, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion? Oh, I got Nicole. How about David? You can have a second? Beautiful. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, August twenty-second, six P M. Here in the community room. Uh, followed by the policies committee, um, uh, the conclusion of the board meeting. Again, the school board is gonna be getting together here on Tuesday, or this Thursday for, uh, retreat to go over stuff for this upcoming school year. And please check our school's website out if you are looking for employment. We would love to visit with you. So what time is it? Six thirty-two. Meeting is adjourned.